I pledge my.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Sue, roll call.
Councilmember Groves?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Salzwiedel?
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Here.
Consent agenda for tonight. Discussion changes. Sue.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzwiedel?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Public comment. Uh, bold business number eight. Oh, alright.
For the record, my name is Josh Langdon. My address is five zero three three Montgomery Avenue, Northeast, Bellevue, Michigan. And I'm a pastor at Bible Believers Church. Last time that I was here, I gave a handout that was disgusting, at least to most of us. I would like to give you all something else tonight that isn't of that nature. This is just one of our church gospel tracts. Can tell a person how they can know for sure that one day they will be with God up in heaven. And how their sins can be washed away by the blood of Jesus Christ. And I appreciate you. Let me give this to you. We just said the pledge of allegiance and it still says under God. And I'm gonna try not to preach at you the whole time. I do have a point for being here tonight. You know, the last time I was here was the Saturday after the Pride event. And I've been preaching the gospel in public for the majority of my adult life, or all of my adult life. And um, I'm used to the confrontation that, that people, like the, the people that attend the Pride events or the organizer Pride events have towards creatures of the gospel. Um, but actually the bias that I felt from Mayor DeBoer and Leah took me by surprise a bit. Uh, that elected officials had that much of a bias towards the LGBT agenda and against biblical Christianity. That did take me by surprise. But we were reviewing the transcript from the October sixteenth meeting. And um, Mayor DeBoer at twenty-three minutes and twenty-six seconds said that he wouldn't want to be part of putting any policy together to address a problem that I don't feel exists in the first place. And I had just at the meeting after the Pride event, um, shown you examples of loud profanity from the stand, uh blasphemy, pornography that was passed out at the event, in addition to men dressed up in thongs and dancing sexually in front of children. So that concerns me that if, if anyone doesn't have a problem with that, I'm concerned. Mr. Yankovic at thirty minutes and three seconds said, just to be clear, I'm not a fan of someone looking at a child and saying, if you're gay, you're going to burn in hell. You know, people tend to demonize us when, when we're out preaching the gospel. But when they meet us face to face, they find that's not what we do. That isn't at all what we do. And um, we don't walk up to kids and say, you're, you're gonna burn in hell because you're gay. We, we, we give them the good news of the gospel that every person born into this world needs Jesus Christ. And that he is the answer for everyone. But um, so it seems that almost the entire council has just taken this agreement that the real problem are, are the preachers, are, are the Christians. And I, I don't, I don't understand that. I, I really don't. And um, continuing on, so at, at forty-five minutes, uh, councilmember Yankovic said, maybe the protesters should be limited to a particular area. And I honestly gotta chuckle, like hurting us into a corral like we're, like Rashid. Um, obviously that's not feasible or con- or constitutional. If the public, or if the event is open to the public, then, then we can be there as well. So that's not feasible. So I, I wanted to come today to say that if the event continues to be open to the public and continues to promote sexual perversion and the abuse of children, which is exactly what the LGBT movement is about, that we will continue to show up and preach the gospel at the event. You don't need any new, you're talking about new policies? You don't need new policies. You have thirteen dash one three one that is against indecent and obscene language. You have thirteen dash one three two that is against indecent or obscene conduct. And you have thirteen dash one three three that is against indecent exposure. All three of these things happen at every single Pride event. I witnessed it, I have a new video camera. And the Miller test is at your disposal to decide whether or not something is obscene. And that's been around forever. You don't need a new policy. You just need to enforce the policy that's on, that's on hand. I don't understand people that defend drag queen shows in public with children present. I don't understand how anyone that has any kind of moral, moral character could actually stand behind what's going on, not just in our city, in our state, in our country, all over the world. I, I don't get it. I don't, I don't think you have to be my stripe of Christianity to, to see that. And I'll wrap up quickly. Um, at the end of the last meeting on October sixteenth, the organizer of the Pride event admitted that the drag queen show was for adults, not for children. Yet it was open to the public. They said it was advertised for adults as having adult content, but the city and the Pride event allowed children to come. That's gotta change. So why were children allowed to come if it was geared towards adults? These events are perverted and sexually inappropriate. They're degenerate. What's going on at these events? It, this is wrong. Matthew eighteen six says, but whoso shall offend one of these little ones which believe in me, it were better for him that a millstone were hanged about his neck and that he were drowned in the death of the sea. Romans one twenty-two says, professing themselves to be wise, they became fools, and changed the glory of the uncorruptible God unto an image made like to corruptible man, and to birds and four-footed beasts and creeping things. Wherefore God gave them up to the uncleanness through the lust of their own hearts, to dishonor their own bodies between themselves, who changed the truth of God into a lie, and worshiped and served a creature more than the Creator, who is blessed forever amen. For this cause God gave them up into vile affections; for even their women did change the natural use into that which is against nature, and likewise also the men, leaving the natural use of the woman, burning the lust one toward another, men with men working that which is unseemly. The Pride movement will not rest until their flags are flown from every flagpole in the nation, and any Christian that dares tell them the truth about their eternal soul is in prison. The LGBT crowd is anxiously waiting for the Michigan Senate to pass the expansion of HB four four seven four. They tell us this when we're on the streets.
Hey, you're at five minutes, so I gotta ask you to wrap it up here.
I'm wrapping up in fifteen seconds. And I just wanted to say, if you can keep children out of this event, out of the drag queen show, we will stay outside of the event. That is my compromise of the city. If you're able to keep the children out of the drag queen show, we will preach outside the event. So I'm asking for your help. Thank you.
Anybody else? Excellent. Okay, uh, number eight, amendment for Carson Red Plan Resolution twenty twenty period light.
The next step in addressing the matter, nine ninety North Washington, is to, is to add eight forty-six North Washington, eight forty-eight North Washington, and ten forty-nine, ten forty-seven North Washington as park properties in the City of Lowell's Park and Recreation Master Plan. Additionally, this re- this request aligns with all of our objectives to facilitate the unilateral annexation of eight forty-eight North Washington, which is really nine ninety North Washington. So to show you what we're doing. The item in red, that would be the property that we would, that we would annex into the city of Lowell and become park property. The item in blue is property we already own, that's in the city limits, but was never deemed park property. And the item above, that's blue with, with a couple squiggly lines, that is the, um, that's the cabin property. For some reason, I don't understand why, but the cabin was not included in the park map, so I just added it. So all of these properties, plus all the property in green incorporates scout, would incorporate Scout Park if we gave it as park property. And then the matter should be resolved. It, once it's park property, it can't be sold without a vote of the people. The next step after that would be the unilateral annexation, which is the next agenda item. And then once that gets approved by the state of Michigan, then we come back and rezone those, rezone the three properties as public facility. And then the matter should be resolved. So I'm recommending Resolution twenty twenty-three to include those into the Park and Recreation Master Plan.
I'll support. Anything from the Scout Park Association?
Just, uh, real quickly.
Yeah, I'll give you guys a chance before. Go on.
Bruce Matthews, uh, three twenty-six Riverside, uh, representing the Lowell Scout Park Association. First of all, uh, a huge thank you. We think that, uh, the process that was engaged in by the city council, uh, Mayor DeBoer and, uh, and Mayor DeBernz, uh, you know, was, uh, an exercise in civic government that, um, I think we'd be proud of. And, uh, we, as an association, thank you, um, for, for that process. We clearly support this, uh, and, and to clarify, because there's been some, um, discussion about the, uh, the addresses and the, the PPN numbers and this sort of thing. But what we're talking about here is, is, uh, the, what was eight forty-eight, which now is, you're talking about is nine ninety.
We call it nine ninety, but legally it's eight forty-eight.
Yeah. Is, is, is part of this, this process, uh, what was, uh, what is, is eight forty-six, um, is already included. If, or, or it will be.
Eight forty-six, eight forty-six was property that was owned by the city.
Right.
But that was zoned residential. And we're putting that into the park, into the parks.
Right, right. At ten forty-nine, um, has already been included as part of the park.
The only one that hadn't been, for some reason, I don't know why, it was ten forty-seven. So we added that.
Yeah. So again, because of the confusion with the PPN numbers and the address and this sort of thing, just wanna clarify, get on the record what we're talking about here. And, uh, we certainly agree with it and support that. And again, thank the, the city for, um, the efforts that, uh, that you're making to preserve and protect and conserve this property for, uh, for the citizens' use, um, and, uh, and we look forward to working with you in the future on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. Motion, it's, we have a second?
Yeah, Marty, we're.
Okay. Motion and second, any other discussion on the first resolution? Sue.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzwiedel?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Alright, that carries, uh, next one is number B, annexation of eight forty-eight North Washington.
Thank you.
Thank you. As you know, we've been addressing the future of nine ninety North Washington, proper legal addressing eight forty-eight North Washington for quite some time.
You alright? You don't have to remember the numbers after.
No. Alright, as we know, the property is currently located in Virgins Township and is adjacent to the city limits of Lowell. In addition, we've done, demolished the structure on the property. Having completed those actions, we are now in a position to unilaterally annex the property into the city of Lowell. This process does not follow the normal annexation procedures and can be achieved via Resolution upon approval by, from the great seal of the state of Michigan. Attach this Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-three, which would enable us to proceed with this annexation. I should mention that there, there may be some title work that needs to be handled administratively before we execute this. However, this resolution should not impede us from addressing those administration matters. I'm recommending that the Lowell City Council approve Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-three, which would unilaterally annex eight forty-eight North Washington into the city of Lowell, subject, subject to approval from the great seal of the state of Michigan.
Love it. Any questions for Mike?
No, I'll make a.
Yeah, what's the great seal?
He can balance a ball.
I believe it's the office of the governor.
Any truth to that, councilman?
While making motion to approve Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-three. I'll support her. Sorry.
Sorry, I know you did. Motion and second, uh, any discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Salzwiedel?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
On behalf of seals everywhere.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Very happily, yes. Alright, that carries, uh, letter of understanding with the Rotary, Mike.
Yep, city administration has been working with Theresa Martin, Cody Chambers, from the Lowell Rotary Club on their reconstruction of Creek Side Kingdom. They are leading the fundraising effort, but we believe a memorandum of understanding is needed to move forward. Um, I've attached the MOU that addresses concerns with the Rotary Club and the city. The facility will remain owned by the city of Lowell, and the city will agree to seek DNR Passport grant and other relevant grant opportunities. The city will handle maintenance of the new facility as we do currently. The Rotary will manage a social media page, and the city agrees to provide meeting space at no cost when addressing items pertaining to this project. I'm recommending that the Lowell City Council approve a memorandum of understanding with the Lowell Rotary Club for the reconstruction of Creek Side Kingdom as presented.
Any questions or discussion on the Alun's Pro Park? Cody, that sound good? Alright.
Alright. Make a motion to do that.
I'll support that. Any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
And Councilmember Salzwiedel?
Yes.
Alright, uh, number eight, under new business, social district request.
The city has received a request from Los Portales, I think I said that right, Mexican Bar and Grill, to be added to the social district for their new restaurant at one oh one West Main. In order for Los Portales to receive a social district endorsement on their liquor license, they must fall within the district boundaries and be approved via city council resolution. One oh one West Main does fall in the district boundaries and attaches to the resolution for consideration. If approved, I will request the city manager or the attorney to address any clerical issues which may occur in dealing with the Michigan Liquor Control Commission with this reso- resolution rather than having to reissue a re- resolution if they require changes. I recommend approval for Resolution, Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-three to allow for Los Portales to participate in the social district at one oh one West Main as presented.
Is that real?
It was the old real plan. I believe the orders are.
They're an act, yeah.
The real plan wasn't in it?
Yeah. They were, yeah. Basically, it was, it doesn't, it doesn't.
It's, it's the same thing, Cliff, I had to do. He said he would do a lot of voting this year. Yes, alright, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two dash two twenty, twenty-three.
And I'll support. Any other questions? Sue.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzwiedel?
Yes.
And Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Reason through, uh, number B, Planning Commission pay, Michael.
I'm ready to request your consideration for an adjustment to the stipend provided to members of the planning commission who serve the city of Lowell. Specifically, we propose increasing the stipend for planning commission meetings to forty-five dollars per meeting to align it with the stipend provided to the Lowell Lake Power Board. Currently, members of the planning commission are compensated at a rate of thirty-five dollars per meeting. While we greatly appreciate their dedication and commitment to our city's planning development, we've observed that the stipend has remained at this rate for an extended period of time. In contrast, members of the Lowell Lake Power Board are compensated at a rate of forty-five dollars per meeting. To maintain fairness and equity across boards, various boards and commissions within the city, it is essential that the kite stipend rates are consistent. The Lowell Lake Power Board plays a critical role in overseeing, overseeing the city's energy infrastructure, just as the planning commission has a significant impact on city's growth and development. By offering the same stipend to both entities, we can ensure that the compensation reflects the dedication and responsibility of our planning commission members. Increasing the stipend to forty-five dollars per meeting will only be a fair resolution of the effort of work by planning commission members, but will also hopefully attract between individuals of valuable expertise in planning and development. This adjustment will demonstrate our commitment to valuing the contribution of all boards and commissions equally. Uh, I will not provide a recommendation of this, but is that some policy?
Policy council decision?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the stipend to increase the planning commission. Except for Marty? Okay. I didn't say. For all the planning commission members.
I'll support.
Alright, any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzwiedel?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Alright, keeping it moving, uh, city holiday.
Yes. At the request of Councilwoman Groves, I was asked to have a discussion about our observed city holidays and to, and to decide if any changes were needed to be made regarding the recognition of certain specific city holidays and to seek guidance on whether to continue the current practice in place. Uh, I've listed three holidays. Uh, the first one is Martin Luther King Day. The city of Lowell recognizes Martin Luther King Day by not having a council meeting, but our offices remain open. I was asked to see if we wish to continue this practice. This approach ensures that our city respects and observes this important holiday, which celebrates the life and achievements of Dr. Dr. King. Please advise if the city council wishes to maintain this practice or if there are any other proposed changes or alternative arrangements. Juneteenth. Uh, in recent years, Juneteenth has gained widespread recognition and is now becoming a federal holiday. We would like to seek guidance on whether the city should consider recognizing Juneteenth as an official holiday. Uh, the last one would be Veterans Day. Veterans Day is a federal holiday that obviously honors and celebrates the service of all United States military veterans. As a consi- consideration, the kids, the city could, could choose to recognize Veterans Day, possibly providing a day off to city employees who are veterans as a show of gratitude for their service to our nation. Would like to engage in the discussion to see if you wanna make any changes.
I don't, the only thing, like I, I think we should observe all three, but providing the day off to city employees who are veterans doesn't account for if they are married to a veteran or the child of a veteran, or the brother or sister of a veteran. And I don't think, I think if you're gonna close it, close it uniformly for every. Yep, cuz you don't know what people have sacrificed outside of just dedicated service.
Sure.
But I think we should recognize them all and be closed for them all.
I, I'm not opposed to it, but again, we just reduced our opening days to two, fifty-two days. So when we're all said and done, we're, we're open less than two hundred days a year for the rest of the general public to come in and be able to do business within the halls of the city hall. Uh, another thing we need to take in, when the, the schedule was originally written for holidays, Lowell Lake Power was also considered into that so that the offices would be joined. I found this out Monday at coffee with councilmen previous. So there's also some consideration to think about Lowell Lake Power and with the holiday schedule. Except I'm not opposed, but it's getting coming less and less days that we got open to serve.
So, so some of the things is, obviously, but that has not been finalized yet four times. We, we're gonna discuss that and just have.
Yeah, exactly.
But.
I have a feeling it's going to continue.
I have not, yeah, I have not seen any staffing issues. And we have, we've had no service issues. My thought process would be a couple things. One, um, for example, um, obviously, if, if, if this is put into a union contract, it's a different conversation. But my one thought process would be is that if, if the holiday is on a Friday, we don't observe it. It's, it's just the regular day off. And it, and for example, uh, Good Friday, that's a perfect example. We've already worked a forty-hour week, if that changes. So that's technically not an observed holiday. And, and we lost no, where, if that week was normal, they'd get thirty-two hour work week, where it's still forty. President's Day would be another one. I would, I would recommend actually bringing, keeping city hall open on President's Day. And then let's say, for example, a lot of times now, like we would have, we would observe Fourth of July. If, let's say, you know, if, if Fourth of July falls on a weekend, we usually observe it on a.
Right.
On a Friday or a Monday, we probably wouldn't do that. And, uh, we wouldn't, and depending on how Christmas falls, sometimes, like for example, this year, the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, I believe, are the days we have. I'm sorry, no, the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
Sorry, Monday.
Yeah, the twenty-fifth and twenty, we would observe. But going forward, the, the thought process would be is, if, if Christmas happened on a Friday, we would, well, Christmas happened on a Friday, say, we'd have, we'd, we'd obviously observe Christmas Eve. It'd only have one day off rather than two days off. And then the following Monday, we would reopen. So I'm looking at it from, from that angle to try and.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to coming with a real good plan.
Yeah. No, I just wanna, yeah, I just wanna.
Put it out there. And thanks, Lee, for bringing them up and considering that for three days.
I, well, I think that it was Martin Luther King Day, but I had noticed that, um, we were not having a city council meeting on that day, um, which is fine, I'm happy to observe the holiday. But then we were not observing Juneteenth, we had a meeting on Juneteenth. So if we're gonna recognize one federal holiday, I think that it's important to recognize all of them in the same manner and give them all the same respect. So that's my only point of view. I'm supportive of it.
Agreed. Come back. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Nice, well, old business, I know. Boarding Commission reports, Cliff.
I have nothing for you, sir.
James.
I have not a good point, other than, uh, next month, uh, December fifth or fourth, we're meeting on the LCTV for a most time meeting, so.
It's around. I think it's Pearl Harbor Day.
September seventh?
September, I bet.
September, Dad. Why do Pearl Harbor Day is the September seventh? That I did know.
Was it?
All of my meetings are coming now.
Monday. I have one, I don't need a fire authority, it's Thursday, this week. Mike, enter the report.
Monroe Project, um, the road, the road's been paved, uh, they're still just doing some restoration work. They'll probably be doing some even up until the spring. The biggest issue right now is the parking lot. If you've noticed, it's ponding in a couple spots. From what we sense, the contractor put too much, too much ash fall down. So, um, the plan for, to get us through the winter months is there, um, Williamson Works is working with CL Trucking. Their probably, their, their plan is right now, put in two leach basins to catch the water and have it go down, catch the storm sewer. The plan would be then in the spring to, um, to repave it. At no cost, none of this is any cost to the city. Thursday, we are planning on striping the lot, at least through the winter months. We got a very cheap price to do that, so we're gonna do that. And, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll keep you informed as to what's going on there. The Lowell Township Water, um, we did have to update both estimates. Um, I, I have, um, given those to the city attorney to give to the township. Uh, the biggest issue was we didn't have, um, we didn't include any sort of groundwater storage and, um, place for, to connect generators that would be needed for the facility. So those were both added to both, to both proposals, and, uh, I've sent that off to the city attorney. August twenty-fourth, the storm event. If you recall, um, the governor declared a state of emergency for Kent County, trying to allocate funds for the event. The issue at hand is, uh, the state cannot do anything with the, with those funds, to declare funds, until the federal government decides that they want to include that as a, as a national state of emergency. Once they make that decision, then, um, we, in addition to whatever state funding would be available, there could be federal funding available. If that's, if the federal funding isn't gonna come, then the state would come with, come with, basically come with whatever they offer. But until that's decided at the federal level, we will not hear anything about any reimbursement.
Do you have any idea what that reimbursement might be?
Basically, what they've told us is most likely overtime, uh, but it has to be thirty thousand dollars in overtime. However, it could be possible because with Lake Power and the city, we may have racked up. I had, I haven't really checked with Charlie, but I would, but they could be included in it. But they, that was, that was preliminary, they haven't said anything yet, so. But that's, when I, when I talked to the county shortly after the storm, the biggest thing was tractor overtime.
It's not big enough to pay off the debt on the road.
No. Unfortunately. The Four Mistry Project, um, we did receive small urban funds for the fiscal year twenty-four through the state of Michigan, um, three hundred, I believe it's three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Only be about ninety thousand dollar match for the city to, to Mill and Phil from Beach to G Drive. The state has asked us to, uh, move that project to the fiscal twenty-five year. Um, I didn't see an issue with that, so we just did. And so that would be allocated in twenty-five, uh, twenty-five, probably for us to be fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. I'm looking at finding a way to add Jackson to the twenty-four, twenty-five street allocation. The good news is that the excise tax could be higher this year. The good news is that the excise tax could be higher this year. State sales statewide were $2.7 million, according to state reports that I found. So if you do the math, if, if you do the math, I have an estimate of about $57,000 per facility, so that ranges in anywhere between, if they, if they only count eight facilities, it's about $450,000. And if they count us for all nine facilities, it's like $513,000. We budgeted $250,000 in excise this year. So until, I won't know for certain until the spring, but at least my estimate is what that, when it comes up to about 57,000 a facility. But I also don't know what the state's going to take. The state does take money off the top, obviously for their administrative costs, and I don't know. There was money that was supposed to be set aside for studies for soldiers with PTSD. I don't know if that's been completed yet. So if that happens, that 57 might be a little bit less. But we've, but the, the, the sales went up about $600 million more than they did the year before. So it, it's going to, you know, even as the facilities, number of facilities start dropping, which you're starting to see statewide, I don't see the sales numbers going down, so who knows? Washington Street, we did submit the water and sewer plants to Eagle last week. We should be getting those to look in administratively, hopefully later this week. The fairground fencing, I mentioned to you before that we were trying to ascertain the fence. We made a deal with the youth fair. They had a, they had a HVAC repair that was needed in the King Building. However, since they're vacating it after the end of, you know, end of the year, they asked us, it was roughly the same price as what they were going to charge us for the fence, so we just did a swap and we took care of it. And then lastly, there will be a joint meeting with Lowell Light Power on Monday, the 20th of November at 6:00 PM. The city council meeting will follow afterwards, discussing IT and funding for the airport. That's all I have.
When we repaved this parking lot up here, can we stress to them it needs to be done on a Monday? Because of all of the grief the businesses had to go through.
I can mention that, yeah.
Yeah, and that's the reason, while our Chamber of Commerce might object, but that's all right.
Very close.
Speaking of IT, did, did you send the, was that a scam email about? Oh, I'm trying to think of the topic that we all got. I did not open it.
Oh, the works.
I never sent scam emails out.
It didn't have your name on it, it didn't come from my.
I never sent out.
It came from the city of Lowell. I did not open it.
If you're not sure, if you're not sure of something, don't open it.
I didn't, I was, I'm saying.
I will tell you that our service does provide them, I don't know when they provide them.
Okay.
They don't tell me.
On the fairgrounds, are they tearing all the buildings down?
The barns, everything, but the wreath barn, yes. Wreath barn, the King Building.
I don't, I'm taking my deep breath.
Are the walls? A moment of silence with walls.
Oh, after 50 years?
52.
They're selling.
The museum, Mike, that is a city-owned building?
Yes.
I think we've, we've allowed them enough grace time to come up with a different design. I would like to see us just get it done, preferably before the end of the year, because it's, it really is an ice over.
Yeah, they were, I know last week they were, they were going to be submitting plans to put some stairs in. They just had to get approved by the building officials, so they are, I know they are working on that. But I also have not got an updated estimate for the, for the extra work that they want to do.
Right, but how long, I mean, how long do we give, right?
Yeah.
It needs to just get done.
I agree.
And they're going to use their contingency fund to pay for anything, correct?
I believe so. I, I believe it's come in significantly under, so. I still haven't gotten the amount yet, so I don't know until I, until I see it. Yeah, they're not telling me anything either, so.
Well, maybe they should be. Anything else for the lost street city manager? Appointments, Suzie did a ton of work for me on that last week. So now we're up to the 2024 vacancies.
Mike, Mr. Kent is here tonight.
Yeah, I was just going to ask him.
We need his leadership on that, so I'm hoping he takes it.
LCTV board?
Continue?
Sure.
Any objections? You can go do it to his face after.
I don't, he doesn't mind the job.
Fire Authority, I can talk, I can take care of Thursday. Clara, I can talk to Perry. There's some resignations, so if you want to get involved, we need two on Arbor Board, one on Airport Board, Construction Board of Appeals. Who else resigned? Oh, and Parks and Rec, yeah, I added him. Would you like to continue on the building authority?
Sure.
You do now, Mike. Now you do. Construction Board of Appeals, if anybody wants to be on it, we've met twice in 11 years, so it's not a high-stress job.
But when you meet, though, it's high-stress.
Yeah, yes, hardest 15 minutes to go. All right, council comments, Cliff.
I got none.
Jim.
I wish everybody the best tomorrow during the election. And it's, I did hear from somebody that they've never seen so many signs out during an election as this particular election, so, you know, have some good luck, everybody.
I put mine out, too. Why, I'm sitting around, afraid of finding it. Hey, I'm a big hand this front end.
Oh, it's me.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So I always find it unfortunate when somebody comes to speak and then calls me after I sleep and then leaves. That is unfortunate, however, I'm going to address it. My allyship to the LGBT plus community does not make me a biased council member. It makes me a human rights activist. Being an advocate for fair, equal living for all is the very reason I ran for council, why I believe that the Lowell citizens voted for me. Flip my page, I ran out of room. Personal beliefs aren't, personal beliefs aren't the beliefs of everyone, so no, it don't just serve Christians. Though I do do my part in protecting the right to practice religion, which is the practice of your chosen belief system. I do, however, serve the citizens of Lowell, and I will always do my due diligence to make everybody feel as safe and protected here as I possibly can. And if that means calling somebody out for their objections and judgments, I will do that every single time. That is it.
Could you?
We had a really good time.
We were at, oh, everybody, good luck tomorrow in the elections. We were at Traverse City for MML classes, and one of the keynote speakers was, showed a video, and they're really cool. And I asked Mike if this is something we could look into, and I did look into them. Those stencils are cheap. What they did is, they have all these different stencils you can buy, right? Like all kinds of sayings and stuff, and you take this waterproofing spray. It's environmentally friendly, it doesn't hurt anything, and you spray it on the sidewalk. And you literally, during the sunny day, you never see it. But when it rains, all of a sudden, these sayings, or my personal favorite was the frogs with lily pads. They all of a sudden show up on the asphalt, and it's really cool. They did a hopscotch one. I mean, how many kids don't want to play hopscotch and mud puddle, right? Because that's what they do. So it was really cool. We can do this for less than $100 bucks, and I think that's something.
Yeah, I talked to Rich about it, and so they did that and that list.
We already had those applications for it, right?
Yep.
So we could just have Cliff make us some stencils.
Canadian flag.
Canadian flags, models. You didn't say anything about that gift during your conference.
Council comments?
Those were.
The Canadian hockey team chipped in. It got me this swell magnet.
I had to go all the way to Traverse City to get that for you. We actually thought we got lost. We wanted to look for some weird candy, too. Good?
Yeah.
All right, I just hope everybody goes and votes tomorrow. I've made it, my thoughts on the candidates pretty clear, so. And I hope that at least, at a minimum, Jim and I have done enough to earn your votes. Library is on there tomorrow, too, right?
Yep.
So that's important.
That's pretty much a no-brainer. We would be voting in favor of having a reduction.
Yep, so get out there tomorrow, 8:00 PM. I thought there was something else. Oh, I was at Traverse City, too, getting Cliff a present and attending some continuing education for this position. And we took, Rich and I, Marty and Jim were in an AI presentation that went swimmingly well, right?
I like to comment on it because I don't think, I didn't understand it until the next day when that other gentleman was speaking and talking about it, like how they painted the silos to match. And so when we went in and talked about AI, I'm thinking artificial intelligence, and how does it affect the city and cybersecurity and all of it, not being art. So, and plus, the guy was extremely boring and. He lost two-thirds of the crowd within the first 20 minutes, but besides it. But I didn't, I didn't think about it until after that guy's vote the next day. And it really isn't a bad idea. I just don't know where we would incorporate it in our city, whether there's a, you know, a side building that could be painted in murals and all those good things, but, but it did make sense, but again.
Those are some tiny little buildings down there.
Tiny?
The King Building, because we don't have anything over three stories tall. Oh, I learned that earlier.
So, sorry, Mike.
No, no, I was, I sat in while they were herding out like cattle out of their councils. I sat in a council manager relations, and the panel was fantastic. Brenda was on it, a couple other people from Westland, and then an MML attorney. And really, really good to see that somebody like the municipal league who does a fantastic job helping us learn and grow and get better and serve the residents. We've implemented probably 85% of the stuff that they're recommending, transparency and communication and open-mindedness. And it's really good to see, I don't enjoy seeing other communities struggle, but it's nice when you go somewhere with a reputation like that and hear that we're already doing a bunch of really, really good stuff. It was a council that had five of their seven members facing ethics violations, and they don't have a quorum to vote on the ethics violations because too many of them are. Yeah, you think we get it bad. Believe me.
And I think we're ahead of the curve on, from what I heard on some of those things. When we talked about the rural, we sat in that class as well, too. And everybody wants, wants that handout instead of what can I do locally in that part of it. So I think we're ahead of the curve on quite a bit of the things we do.
Yeah, I agree. That rural one had a really good moderator, too.
All of that was you.
Yeah, it was me. I did excellent, I mean, not biased. We couldn't sit in the front row in the Halloween while he was doing.
Well, Leah and Jim and Rich absolutely could have sat in the front.
Oh, it was me. All right, I don't have anything else to say. I look for a motion now to move to close session to consider material exempt from disclosure by state or federal statute, privileged legal opinion, MCL 15-216. I'll make that motion.
And I'll support it.
Any discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Salzweedl?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.